Members.
Joe Campbell.
Deborah Cass.
Larry Danner.
Ellen May Bell.
Charlotte Miller.
Karen is here and Tim, the chief, is also here. My allegiance.
I.
I.
Make a motion to.
To.
Right.
United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the United States of America.
And to the people who live in this nation.
Um, number four of the Housekeeping, there's no discussion on that. Uh, moving on to the approval of minutes, we'll start with Executive Minutes 325, 2019, Set One.
Before the vote, I cannot vote anything prior to June 4th. I was not awarded.
A through G. Right?
Right. I could probably vote on 559.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion to approve the executive session.
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, 325, I'm sorry. Joe's first, Larry's second. That was Joe.
325.
325.
Larry's number five.
He did, oh, he didn't. It was Ellen, wasn't it?
I said.
Sorry. My bad, my bad. Roll count. Joe, what do you? Three.
Roll count.
Yay or nay on the executive minutes?
Oh.
I gotta do math.
Yay. I'm about to motion.
Yay.
Yes.
You can't vote. Oh, that's what, sorry, Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
That's approved. Regular minutes, 422, 2019.
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second. Joe, your vote on that one?
Yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. Executive Session 422, Set One, Set Two, Set Three, and Eight, Item H. Was Item H, Set One? Item H was an executive. Oh, oh, yes, okay. But I don't see Set One, Two, and Three.
Those were the ones that you emailed. I don't remember the topic because they're accepted.
Okay.
Those are the ones you had.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Executive Minutes 422. Set One, Two, Three, Item H. I'll second it. Joe?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Debbie, yes. That one's approved. Special Meeting 51, 2019.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Um, yes, that was the one we missed.
Okay, so, okay.
Okay, so then, we're a call for the rule clock.
Ellen, yes.
Ellen's yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. Joe is abstaining because he wasn't there at the meeting. Special Meeting 515, 2019.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Call to the Board.
Yes.
Oh, you were that one, yeah. Joe's yes.
Yes, Ellen.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. Approved. Uh, regular meeting, 529.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Call vote to the Board.
Yes.
Joe? Is yes, okay.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. That's approved. You have fun, I don't care. Executive Session Minutes 529, 2019, Set One, Set Two, Set Three, Set Four, and again, item, it should be Ellen's. Why can't it?
It's mine.
Do you remember what it was?
It was three L, three M, and three N.
L, M, and, yes, okay. So, I make a motion to approve those minutes. I'll second that.
Yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. That one's approved. A special meeting, 64, 2019. I haven't had a chance to look at those yet. We got. I haven't either. We just got.
Those ones we just got.
Late just. So, we'll have to table those?
Yeah.
Can we make a motion? We need to make a motion. I make a motion to table 64, Special, 64 Executive, and probably likely 613, correct?
Right, that's right.
I'll second that. Prove one more.
Yes.
Yes. Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Larry, yes.
Debbie, yes. That's approved. Okay, uh, we're on to reports. Um, Dave will not be available until at least 1:30 because that's his normal time meeting with us because he had another meeting. So, we're gonna go on to the Chief's Report. Uh, I might read the little word that goes with that. The Governing Board may not pro- process, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on this matter unless the specific matter is preferably noticed for legal action. Therefore, action taken as a result of the Chief Report will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or scheduling the matter for future consideration and discussion on a later date. Arizona Rice Stat 38-431 that O2K. Chief?
Okay, um, for me, um, with our calls, we had no AMR response calls. For, we had a total of 75 calls, 38 transport, seven refusals, 10 fire calls, um, service calls, four, good intent, six, also one, six. Highway 93 calls, 14. As of June so far, we have, um, six fire calls, two structure fire, uh, excuse me, eight fire calls, two structure fires in June already, and six brush fires. Chief callouts so far in June after hours is four, as of right now, up to this point. Uh, scheduling for June, we were fully covered in Dolan Springs with four days in Mead cover. July, we are fully, I have copies, I did not bring the copies of the schedule, they're sitting on the desk. Um, July, we are fully covered in Dolan with, right now, uh, 20, I believe, 20 days covered in Mead for July. Um, some of the meetings in that I did, since I've taken over, um, I did go to Lake Havasu for the Arizona Choir Chiefs Association Meet and Greet so that they can meet me and who they can contact instead of not putting a face to all the emails that they send to me. Um, June 12th, I did have a meeting with Kathy Jenkins, she's helping us get the Wildlife Program up and going. Um, we are, right now, in the process of getting all our information updated with the State IGA for the Wildlife Program. So, we should hopefully have everything going probably by the end of August, so we should still catch fires this year. I did go to the Dispatch Community, Communication Group Meeting, uh, for KMA Dispatch. They are, um, we're having a lot of issues with image trends right now on their end and our CAD, so, um, I did send an email out this morning to Jan and talked to her on the phone this morning before coming up here, and they are working on that now. It's not just us, it's KMA, everybody's having an issue, so they're, they're working on that. District property, nothing new to report on that. District vehicles, um, we did get Chief 401 brush truck that is now brush 416, it is not Chief 401 vehicle no more. Um, that's gonna be brush 416. It has been in service this month, um, just come out of service today. We are looking at getting that repaired. Ambulance 186, the Blue and White backup at Station 41 is in the shop for no air conditioning in the patient compartment or, um, in the front cab. We did have to use that on a call for, uh, an oncoming crew, and we discovered there was no air conditioning. I think that's it for vehicles. We did, uh, move the big water tender 438 from Mead to Dolan and brought 418 up here, um, because we have more personnel that can drive the, the, uh, big retender down there because it's on automatic, so, we did move that down here. We still have the capabilities for using 418 here, it's still, we can use it to fight fires, so, and the volunteers up here do not wanna drive that, so, we did move that. Projects in the works, like I said, the Wildlife Program initiated, um, we did start, right now, I've started a big work in the building on 18 different grants, so, we are working on those. I did just, uh, redo the, uh, 100 Club grant, um, that is mailed off, Phil has mailed that off for us. They do not start awarding those again until September, so, we did have to beam by September 1st, so, we got it in now. And then, airline tickets were purchased for Phyllis and Scott to go pick up the command truck from Texas, they are leaving Wednesday to go get that. The administrative assistant referral, uh, contact was made for her doctors, um, they are calling back, they are estimated between eight and 16 weeks out to get that done. So, that has been made, and they are going to call us back. Cecil, our mechanic, has had personal issues and for time being, he is out, so, um, we've been utilizing, uh, Tim Smith for repairs around here that, uh, we need, like, done right now instead of taking to the shop. He, uh, he's willing to work up, um, a price range and everything with us if we want him to do all of our repairs, um, which I'm going to look into this because, first of all, he's local here, he comes to and gets it done here instead of having to take it to town every time in, in, in town, so. And our current staffing levels right now, we have two full-time EMTs, um, we just hired another one full-time, uh, five, five PLC EMTs, and we are up to 15 PLC medics now. And now, we do have eight volunteers right now with eight more applications that are waiting to be done for volunteers.
Can I ask, what's PLC?
Paid on call.
Thank you.
Part timers.
I'm trying to figure it out.
So, we are, uh, in the process of looking for full-time medics to fill those slots, so, we don't have to do without any part timers on time. And that's what we got for May so far of June.
Is. Charlotte's. What I'm looking for is the schedule for June and July, which are 500, yes. Will you be able to email those out?
I, I absolutely will, yes.
And, and, so, do we just have two full-time EMTs, or, uh, uh, I heard you say we just hired one, I didn't know if it was.
Yeah, that's, that's the two. We only had one full-time EMT.
Right.
We have two now.
Okay. How difficult it is, is it to get people out here and to be working here?
Um, the, we have PLCs that love working medium, um, it's just, we have, they all have other jobs than PLC, so, it's, and most of them work A shift or B shift, so, trying to cover A and B shift with those guys is hard, so, um, that's why we have more at Station 41 because that's necessary to be covered. I would like to have Mead covered every day, and, um, I'm working on that now. If I get, um, a couple of full-time medics for Dolan, um, then it'll, it's be easy to do because the PLCs are wanting to come up to Mead and work here, so. We're.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to Executive Session, uh, 7A. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Prior and Current Statement Invoices Review for Legal Counsel Documentations That Was to Be Provided by Legal Counsel Relating to Statements and Invoices. Pepper. Uh, the information is to be provided by the attorney, no action. Okay. Um, 7B, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Intern Fire Chief Contract Review With Legal Counsel. There's no motion. I don't think so. Um, there is no action there. And C is, um, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Intern Chief Contract, Tim Bonney, and that's the Board.
Can B and C be here?
No, they're two of them. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the intern chief contract with changes as directed to legal counsel, and Chief Bonney will be providing a contract for his attorneys to review. I'll second that. I need a Board, Board vote, Joe?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. That's approved. Okay, all right, we're going into the regular meeting. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding PTO, calculation and the amount, we need to hold up on that. Uh, B and C will have to wait until the board votes, so, we're gonna go down to C. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Presentation by Susan. She not.
She not because, I forgot, my bad, I forgot to tell her it's starting to leave, and she's gonna be here for one call. She's expecting it to be one call.
So, then, we're gonna go to D. So, we'll go to D then. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Board Meeting, Preparations, Adjustments to Agenda, List Items, Board Packages, Due Dates, Date Deadlines, that's Administration.
So, currently, I'm starting to prepare as much as advanced as possible, however, we all know things come up and happen. At the moment, our process is the Friday, that is roughly a week ahead of the meeting, when I send a tentative list to the members about the items, and the members are to send back their list no later than noon on Monday. Then, starts packet punch time, and anything additional that has been added, the possible research involved, or material causes delays. Packages are supposed to be ready for pickup on Wednesday at 3:00 PM. What I'm asking the Board to consider is that we modify this process and see if it works, but, as the process currently does not work 100%. I'm asking the Board to consider approval to have the tentative agenda item list outbound, out to the members on the Wednesday by noon, and the Board members to return their list with the material if necessary on Thursday by noon. The following week being Thursday for pickup by 3:00.
So, instead of the Friday when you send us the tentative list, it's the Wednesday before that we get you the agenda, so, when will you send us the tentative list?
Wednesday by noon, you'll have the list.
Okay.
And then, the next day, Thursday by noon, you guys will send it back. And then, we move the packet pickup day to Thursday by 3:00 instead of Wednesday by 3:00.
So, a week later, after we send to our list at 3:00 is pickup.
I'll make a motion that we go along with your recommendation since you have to do the work. And I can't thank you enough for the excellent work. I'll second that.
Board vote?
Yes. Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. That's approved. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Annual Health Insurance Renewal For Physical Year 1920 With EMI, Annual Renewal With Copper Point Physical Year 1920 For Workless Compensation Administration.
So, we'll start with the health insurance. Um, our current plan, we have EMI, and I reached out to our broker who got us, got me some quotes, um. Our insurance currently that we have, we're kind of spinning our wheels with, um, it's not beneficial for the employer or employee. It's because of the network that it's in. Not all the doctors take it. So, um, I stressed that to our broker, and I said, I'd like to see us if we can afford it, get into Blue Cross Blue Shield, I know those will take it. Well, he managed to do it, and he managed to make it affordable. Um, so, if we renewed with our current plan, as is with the networker in, which is Cigna, the rate actually went up, and that would put us at, um, 33,000.96 annually, maxed to the eight employees. We've never been maxed, the most we've had on the plan is six. If we moved to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Network, um, the annual amount maxed to the eight employees would be 29,820.48. The rate actually drops for district to pay for employee. Current rate would be 343.76 per employee, and with the new plan, it would be 310.63. So, I'm asking the Board to consider renewal with, with the option, uh, it's listed on there, it's Option 1, um, under the Blue Cross Blue Shield Network.
Good job. Yeah, I make a motion that we go with health insurance that includes Blue Cross Blue Shield. I'll second that.
Are the, uh, the copays and stuff pretty much?
It is. The only, okay, so, on our current plan, we have $3,000 to handle, and on the new plan, it'll be $4,000. But again, we're in a network right now where it's hard to find a doctor that takes, so, that's kind of the.
Ford.
Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes, approved.
So, then, we come to Copper Point, and it's our annual renew for that. And our current estimated annual premium is at 19,630, and our new current estimated premium is at 15,150. So, I'm asking the Board to approve our renewal of Copper Point for physical year 1920.
I make a motion to approve Copper Point for this physical year. I'll second. Board vote?
Yes. Joe, yes. Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes, approved. G, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Cellular Service Provider. Did I miss one? I wrote around it, so. Uh, yeah, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Turnouts For Suppression Staff Review and Information Grant And Purchase Admin. That's you.
Oh, sorry. I don't know, um, we, we have, um, there's, there's many grants we can put in for. They all take time, I mean, it's, it's not an overnight decision. We apply, they go through all our, our information, all the information we put in for the grants, like how big our district is, how big the area we cover, the population, uh, how many people we have working, and all, uh, there's a lot of information going into grants. Um, like I said, we're starting a lot of grants that, um, were not started in previous admin before. We were told that we were awarded a grant, um, Karen and I further, um, investigated that and called the company, and they were not aware of the application needing to be entered in. So, we, uh, we, that's the 100 Club that was, uh, for $12,000, right at between 10,000 and 12,000 for four brand-new sets of turnouts, head, toe, boobs, helmets, everything. We called, and we talked to the lady that's headed the 100 Club, and no application was turned in. So, um, I further talked to her, and the next application acceptance period comes up, you have to add the even for September 1st. Um, I did fill it out, we did, Phyllis mailed it on, so, we are in, in time, but again, that takes time. Um, you, the Board asked me on taking this job that we needed personnel. I got personnel, we have no safety equipment for. The turnouts we have are expired by eight to 10 years. So, we have people, guys, in these turnouts going to fires that are expired. So, um, right now, I, I got a quote, I got three of their quotes, and they're right around the same price, for four full sets is right around $10,125. That's the quote that they gave to, uh, the new quote, sorry, the most up-to-date one is $9,562.48. That is for four full sets of turnouts, which we can turn out for, which we don't have four full-time guys, but, um, personnel that we have, we have two full-time guys and two that, the other two that we can, um, turn out that work full-time now, actually, they're, 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 they're. Because we are going through all these personnel, we've got turnouts upstairs that were, that are all expired, I mean, it's, it's motion violation for all that, we are, uh, the, uh, I guess, I'm asking the Board to, that we need to get some safety gear for this personnel. We got the personnel we cover, we just need safety gear for.
Uh, Chief, what will the 100 Club grant give us approved, and I know that's not till September?
If it's approved, um, we get the maximum of $12,000, um, no less than 10, no more than the maximum of 12. So, um, if they, if they approve it, they, they give it what the quote is for the four sets of turnouts, which, um, if we buy four sets of turnouts and then we get that grant, that's another four sets, all of our personnel will be in up-to-date care.
So, we did budget to like for it, Karen, to purchase for, if we got it.
Yeah, so, if we, they go through the process of picking, um, so many people, they get awarded these, because they have, I believe, it's $72,000 to go through, and, um, they go through the small, it's mainly for the small-line districts that, you know, um, but, so, the application period goes to September 1st, and then it takes time to go through that, so, we could be looking at.
Some ten months?
Yeah, so.
Chief, you reported earlier that, um, that she from Oakland might have some turnouts that she can loan.
We got some of theirs, um, the problem is, they were all lot smaller sizes, I mean, we did, we do have, um, two of our PLCs using the turnouts from her.
Oh, good.
We, we did use those.
I had heard that MACF also had gotten a grant like that, so, make it.
Um, I contacted Tim King with, with MACF, and I'm waiting for him, he was not sure how many, because they're doing the higher max rate right now, so, he was not sure how many they would have available. So, um, I, I've reached out to other departments in the House.
Couple of places. Okay, you need to.
I just have a printout from Pacific Safety Center. It, it says $9,562.48, is that what you were talking about?
Yes, that's, that's what Karen just gave me, the updated, um, it was, um, over 10,000, it was 10,200 and something, and this is the updated one, so, the price data.
I see there's Gold Kidler can invite, you know, I don't know any of his stuff. I see there's Gold Kid Mark and the Right, you know, I don't know any of his stuff. I have no idea.
That's, that's standard issue, that's just the brand name. It's not just...
Go for silver, silver, stick it close.
Charlotte, you have a question? Yeah, I wonder if we pay cash, if we could get some sort of discount, is that an export?
That is something I could, I could call Caesar and talk to him about, absolutely.
Because the, the figures that I've, I've heard from Karen, was we're going to be saving about eight thousand dollars for health insurance and Copper Point. And so that would be a huge amount to address that, if we could keep it down a little bit.
I will, I will contact Caesar and see what we can, we can do with that.
I think, I think it's, it's a no-brainer in terms of the safety of our employees.
It's very important for the safety of the environment.
Absolutely.
Could you make a motion, please, Charlotte?
I will. I make a motion that we approve the chief's request to purchase four sets of turnouts for approximately nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second it. Call the board?
Joe, yes. Larry, yes?
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes, so it's approved. Now we can go to G. Discussion of possible action regarding cellular, cellular service provider equipment plans, follow-up information for possible contract agreement for month-to-month for governmental agency, admin?
So we've made several attempts to get some quotes, and so far, all of Sprint responded back to us. Verizon and AT&amp;T have not. The word is Verizon, so that's one up here for coverage. So the board could, you know, we're asking the board if you want, the quote for Sprint was about eight dollars a month, so if you wanted to enter into a motion of approving a cellular company once we establish one, not to exceed a hundred dollars a month.
If I could, I used to have Sprint for like the years when I lived in Vegas and had business, and I moved out here, and I found Sprint has hard coverage here in the area, and I switched to Verizon for that very reason, to be able to get the coverage. I would think you need the coverage, and so whoever's, that's just my thought. So they could give you a better deal, but if you don't get coverage, you're getting a bad match.
Exactly. AT&amp;T's the worst.
We, I, I looked at all three of their maps, and for our coverage area, Phyllis and I did, well, Phyllis did a lot of our companies. But I looked at all three of their maps of their coverage, and for our whole response area, and everywhere that Verizon has the biggest coverage area, Sprint, AT&amp;T, we're not...
If you'd like, I have a representative I can talk to at Verizon, because I'm actually the library's Verizon rep. So if you'd like, I could get a hold of her, and see what I can find out about a government company like that.
We just couldn't, we haven't got a response back from everything Phyllis has called and emailed them, and Verizon and AT&amp;T both haven't responded.
They are not really fast at responding. You need to talk to their governmental agency person. That's the problem.
I have two people I can talk to.
Can we, can we make a motion then that will prove like a hundred bucks a month? And for Verizon specifically, not any others? And then proceed, then you can get it.
Yep, sure, get it done.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make that motion, I'll motion that Karen proceed with, Karen or chief proceed with attempting to secure Verizon.
I'll second that. Board call?
Joe, yes. Larry, yes?
Ellen, yes. Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes, approved.
I'll second that here too for...
Okay. So we're on the background. It's almost time that we call... We almost called game two, or almost?
We're not going to get through H yet.
Go through H? We're going to go ahead and go through H, and then we're going to go back to...
C.
And then we should be able to leave back on the home again. So H is on, H with A, H is on him. Discussion of possible action regarding Arizona Fire District Association Training and Information Course Associate for Approval, admin?
So this is for newly enlisted officials, have twelve months to take the statutory training. Fire chief also have one year to take the training from the day they work higher. So there's a few different options that we can do. There is the summer class, the summer conference, which is July tenth to eleventh, and there is online availability now. It's still the same cost, so either online's two hundred, and in-person is two hundred, but within-person, you'd have the whole top.
Are you comfortable doing online? I'm talking to you.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know what you were talking to.
It's you, Larry. You're the newest to come, we all live in January.
Oh, sure, good item.
I know, the summer one is in Phoenix.
Whatever, the best. I have no idea, I don't mind doing it online, but internet is always not the greatest out here. Where do they have it at?
It's in Phoenix, isn't it? In July. In July.
I have a doctor in Phoenix, I will sit in his office. No, if it's better to be in person, I'll go in person. I pay my own way. I've always done it, I don't leave. In the other way, I pay my own way. The training is necessary, and I agree in it. I prefer to be there one-on-one, because I can find out a lot more than I can on the internet.
Just let me know, because I have to register you.
You just tell me where, where, I'll be there.
Do you need a motion, Miss Karen? We need a motion for, for the chief. Okay. Do you prefer online or...?
I, I prefer in person.
I make a motion to approve chief's Arizona Fire District Association Training Information Course down in Phoenix in July. I'll second that. Board call?
Joe, yes. Yes, Larry, yes?
Ellen, yes. Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes, so that's approved.
Does the new vehicle have air conditioning? Two vehicles there on the traffic light? Yes.
Okay, we're going to go back.
Well, there's places down there, then a center.
Matt, are you here, Miss Ma'am? Do, do we need to make a motion for Larry?
Yes, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Do we need a, like, motion on Larry also, Karen?
You can make a motion and, and, for me to register him.
Okay. I'll make a motion to register Larry for the Arizona Fire District Association Training down in Phoenix in July.
I'll second that.
Board call?
Joe, yes. I don't think I can go on something that affects me, can I?
Why not?
Yes, ma'am.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes, so that was approved also. So can you please register both of them? Thank you. We're going to go back to C. Discussion of possible action regarding this presentation by Suzanne Anderson, Rigby, Rigby?
Rigby.
Meview area water responder information regarding water and/or approval. Suzanne?
Hello. I spoke with Chief Bonnie a couple of weeks ago, and he asked that I come and talk to you. I live all the way out in Lake City, all the way out by Smith, and we all haul water. And some of the water haulers that we talked to had an idea after the prison burned down.
Oh, we have a...
Oh, you have, thank you. So we were talking about the lack of water that's available for fires in the entire area, even in the city proper of Meview. I'm unaware of the whole political fire department, Lake Mahwahbee Rancho Fire Department, New Chief, all of that. I've been trying to catch up pretty quickly since I met with Chief Bonnie, because he talked about things like annexation and things I really knew nothing about. So in the last couple of weeks, my, a couple of friends and I have done a lot of research, but I still think this holds true. We see that a lot of problems out here for fire suppression have to do with the lack of fires of water supply. We don't have hydrants, half the places out here don't have wells, we have no water out in Lake City at all. So we tried to put our minds together to figure out how we could bring water to fires and let the professionals use it. Chief Bonnie told me that it takes between twenty-two thousand and eighty-five thousand gallons to respond to a small structure fire. And as water haulers, we haul thousands and thousands of gallons of water a week just to supply our homes, and that's not fire suppression. Response time to fires up here is more than thirty minutes and up to two hours. Somebody came to me and said that the mapping that they have of the area isn't adequate. It, it took quite a bit longer for a fire not long ago for the responders to even find the road that the water was on. So we're hoping that somebody could deal with mapping the area a little better. We don't have any volunteer firefighters here. Now, I moved from a very high-fire area, we do have, okay, so I moved from a very high-fire area in Oregon. We had fires every year, and we lived outside of a major fire district, and we had a very healthy and thriving volunteer fire department. And I think that that needs to happen here as well. There's a lack of proper equipment to respond to fires here, it has to come from Golden Valley or Dolan Springs. We know we've lost two structures in the last several months, that many of us watched burn because of the lack of response time and water. After a very wet spring, another concern of ours is this whole area is fueled. We had a great winter, and there is so much fuel out there that without water or volunteers or any kind of response time, I believe that Meview could be another paradise that burned down in California. I really feel that way after moving from a place in Oregon burned every single year. So what we're proposing is that there's a large number of permanent residents here who haul water. We have water trailers, and we have water trucks. And what we'd like to do is get the equipment, a portable water tank for dumping that water in, so that the fire department can use it to fight fires. Since we don't have hydrants, it's what wild, wild fire crews use, are the portable, are the portable tanks. Now, none of our hoses are going to fit on the fire department, a lot of people say it's not going to hook up, but the idea is to gravity dump, to have as many water haulers as we can in the area, bring water, dump it, and let the professionals use it. We feel like it would be a good crew to have here. I will coordinate a response by local water haulers can provide a steady source of water in a portable containing tank within the first fifteen minutes of seeing a fire. With assistance from a volunteer fire crew situated here in Meview and water available, fire suppression can be more effective and save property and insurance costs for everybody here. I know that my house would burn down if I had to depend on what's going on right now. I just know it. And I have thirty-five hundred gallons of water on my property all the time, and it wouldn't put out a fire. Our idea was to create a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's separate from the fire district if that has to happen. If the fire district doesn't want this to be a part of, you know, the, the fire district, we thought we'd create a 501(c)(3) nonprofit for auxiliary water response. We create, we'll create an active board of directors for that, that works and raises funds and raise all our own funds for that. We'd like to acquire equipment either through that or through the fire district, so that we have portable tanks available out here, so that we have a good fire pump available for the volunteer crew until the professionals get there. We'd like to have training done with the fire department, so that we know how to do this, to dump the water, to get the water there, and to do the round robin, so that we propose that we should do to keep that water tank full. We'd also like to do fire spotting out here, have volunteers out on their ATVs looking for fires through the height of the fire season, and have radios so that we can report it. I think that the quicker that we can report a fire, the faster we can put it out. We want to create a partnership with all the local wells to make sure that those wells are available to this group, night or day, so that it can be opened up by a support crew, and the trailers can be filled as they come in, so that we have water. And then all the involved water haulers, if, if this is all approved, have all the approved water haulers keep water on their property all the time. We usually go and get water, we fill our tanks, and we put our empty trailer over to the side, and then the next week, we go get water. So we're going to propose to anybody who wants to be involved to keep full tanks on their property at all times, so we can just hook up and go. And that is what we are proposing to do.
I have a question to add to. I'm not familiar with your water system out here. Do you, do you guys actually have a water company, like we do in Dolan or however?
In Meview proper, in Meview proper, there's a water company in Trash Ridge Valley. Everybody out here has city water. But once you go past Family Dollar, there is no more city water. Everybody is on a well or water hall. And I'd say it's probably seventy-thirty water hall to well, because wells are quite expensive to get out here.
Is there any, is there a fire hydrant somewhere by Family Dollar?
There are no fire hydrants. We do have... None. We have community wells spread out through the water hall area that we join as a co-op. So water's available, but it would have to be hauled to the point where the firefighters need it for water. We don't have hydrants.
Is the property that you're talking about within our fire district?
No.
No.
Join the fire district, and we'll take care of the problem. If you want services, I hate to say it, you gotta pay for them somehow.
I do get that, and, and we all know that. The, apparently, the old fire chief never, these are anecdotal tales. I've been here two years, and this has been my question for two years. So a lot of people, especially the old guard, are like, "Oh, my God, what are we getting annexed into?" And that is a question I have, is when you annex an area, it annexes into a larger city. And so I kind of wanted to know, the proposal for what are we being annexed into? And what does that mean for people? Because like I told you, I'm willing to help you, as long as it all shapes out that it's workable for Meview. I mean, there are people for it, and there are people against it, but none of us really know, when you say annexing into a fire district, what does that mean?
You're correct, and it's by getting the word out and the information out correctly.
Exactly.
Our fire district has the ability, and with a few extra dollars, this fire district can staff better.
Right.
I'm going to be honest with you. Their fire district needs to be covered, and I understand they help. I'm worried about water haulers having an accident and the district getting sued, because we call them.
Which is why we proposed a separate 501(c)(3), a separate entity, which was suggested by the fire chief in Mopin, Oregon, where I moved from. He said the same thing, and he said, "Well, you keep it separate." And the water haulers sign their releases, and we have our own insurance. I mean, these aren't things we haven't thought of. We're not trying to put anybody in, in a situation where it's not worth it. What we're trying to do is figure out a way to provide water for a volunteer crew or a professional crew if annexation does happen. But even if it doesn't happen, we need to think about firefighting up here. If people are so against it, we can raise funds, we can have a volunteer fire crew, but the fact is, is that they don't have any water either.
Chief, what's the requirements for volunteers today?
Volunteers, they have to have some kind of, they do not have to be Fire One or Two certified.
Repeat it, repeat that again.
They do not have to be Fire One or Two certified.
Okay.
It's preferred. They have to be at least eighteen.
Okay.
They have to be able to go through our background check and drug testing, and willing to be trained, and have common sense and, you know, understanding of fire. But I was going to say, I, when I had this meeting with Susan, I thought it was a great idea. We do have water tanks up here that, I've been on several structure fires over here, and with having Suzanne, I don't remember what street, but we do have a big tank that we throw our tenders out of. we throw our tenders out of.
Smith?
King Tut?
King Tut.
Yes, King Tut. We take our tenders, but both fires that we had, we were going down to our station, which doesn't flow very much water to the tender, and then we had tenders going to that tank, which is eight, nine miles from the fire. Both fires we had up here, you had to go to that tank to fill up because that's the only one that had the capabilities of filling our tender right now. What she's saying about, we do have porta pons on our tenders. It's a big plastic pond you set up, and with volunteers up here that we are giving them, they could go to the station, get one of the tenders, set up that porta pond, and they are able to dump into that, and we have water sourced. So when our engine for Dolan Springs comes, all they got to do is hook up their suction line to that, and we've got water flowing now. And with the volunteers, with the training we're going through, we are putting on a training program, volunteers can take that tenders, hook up the suction line, and we can get water flowing within two, three minutes with him showing up. That porta pond takes 30 to 45 seconds to set up, and then with them dumping water and then him, I say he, sorry. He's one of our volunteers here in Meview, bringing the tender and hooking up the suction line. We can get water and then feeding it. Then we don't have to take that tender and keep leaving and coming back, leaving and coming back.
So you can set it up closer to the scene?
You can set it up right on.
I have a scene.
My question to you then, and I'm going to get in trouble. Do you have the time to train them and get them certified so we meet all the insurance requirements?
Absolutely.
Do you have the personnel?
Absolutely.
Get the volunteers, you've got the chief.
Okay. I also have, I have two other questions. This is from the community. There was a tender here, a fire tank here. Is it still here? There was one that belonged to Meview. That's, anecdotally, came to me that there was equipment here at one time. There was the tender that was here.
There's still, we have, in Meview, we have an engine. We have two tenders.
All right. And the other question, oh, now I can't remember it. But I also wanted to mention that in all this research, and I did research, 501(c)(3) nonprofit grant writing, that was my life. That was my life before I moved here. I found a school for firefighting that's free to anybody that wants to go in Ohio. They pay all the expenses. I wanted to mention it to you. I'll get you the name of it. It's written down at home. They pay all the expenses to have fire people certified for rural fire departments, including the flights and the hotel and the training.
You and I talked about that, and I think you were going to give me inspiration.
But yes, I will bring volunteers. And the other question, I guess, was, so I have volunteers who have wildfire, wildland experience who may have a small criminal record, and they say that that keeps them out of being part of the volunteer crew. Is that true?
That's, there's a great area there. It depends. I mean, there's people that have had records that go through background check and they can pass it. I mean, so that's...
Because people live in Meview for a reason.
That is a restrictionary thing, and if they can go through our background check, I have no problem.
Okay. Then I will make sure they turn those to tournament. They've had some, they have history, but they're also doing really well right now.
Question. Jane, what do you think about this?
That's cool. Just going to ask. At first, and no offense, at first, when she first sent me the email about it, I thought, no way. But after her and I sat down and talked about it, I think it's absolutely a good idea. I mean, we, a big part out here, and we have it in Dolan too, because we only have a few hydrants in Dolan, a big part of it is water issues. And like I said, I've been on several structure fires up here as a firefighter mechanic, and that's a big issue. I mean, without water, your operations stop. And there's been times we've been on a fire where, you know, God help us, Old Scott takes the tenders and goes back and forth and gets us water. But if you have a big enough fire, he can be able to run fast enough to get you the water supply.
And then they'll worry you.
Exactly. And like I said, from on the Prozeness fire and that one we had across from the Family Dollar there, you have no reason to go to that tank or to the station.
So I have a question. I'm going to wrap.
It helps to have the water supply there. And if they can supply the water there, or we don't have to stop operations because we don't have a tender with water, absolutely unfor.
One more key to that ordering then is to you. You know, typically, what's happened is we have a two-person crew that shows up. They can't go in the building because you need four people on site is what my understanding was. So what's happened in the past is you're going to try and put the fire out, but more importantly, you're going to prevent it from spraying. So the reason I say that is I wouldn't want anyone to think that if we had this, and I think it's a great idea, I'm really impressed that the citizens are coming forward. I taught them that. We're still though stuck with that two people on site just going to contain the fire, and I don't want anyone to think that this is going to change.
We are in the sherries. We're going to have, that's where Larry comes in, doing the training and getting volunteers certified where they can fight fire also. And also, we are going to start implementing an all-call system.
Wonderful.
An all-call system.
Oh, I thought you said outing hall.
No.
That's a hell.
So if we have a big incident, structure fire, so the people that are on duty at 41 in Meview will go to the structure fire, and then dispatch sends out an all-call to all of our employees, POCs, everything. If they're available, they show up so that we have one personnel for these fires because really, two people on a structure fire, like all the structure fires I've been here, we've had two until assistance shows up with Golden Valley or Kingman or Hattie, and that's 45 minutes to an hour. I mean, you're supposed to be in rehab, not before that. So I'm going to, I'm in implementing the all-call system. And that gets, and I've talked with the crews and a lot of the POCs, and all of them are for it, and if they're available, they're going to respond.
But aren't a lot of them either Kingman or Henderson or Golden Valley? I mean, they're at least going to be the 45 minute if they get the call to come to just Dolan.
As soon as, yeah, as soon as the structure fire is out, you know, they'll, as soon as, so as soon as we get the tones, we'll go, and then they will, that initiates the text to all of them. And yeah, you're looking at response time, but with our volunteers, we can have them backing us up on a structure fire.
It seems to need to be perfect timing in conjunction with, I'm just going to be short.
Go ahead.
In conjunction with our newly established, reestablished volunteer program. This is timed to have backup of water.
I agree 100%.
Suzanne.
Have you guys thought about creating an MOU with Joshua Valley Fire so you can fill the tender up right here in town? Or with gas and gas so you can fill it up right here? Because having, I'm sure, because they all live here, that having an MOU with the water wells that are all over the place here for the department, having a key that can turn on the switch and just fill up your tender.
They've given us permission, that's whose tank we're using off of, whatever, King Tut. That's, we use that. The problem is, we can use the water at our station. It's just not very quick.
What about the well right out here on Sandy Point?
That's something I can contact them about because they do let us use the tank off of King Tut, and that's what we use for operations up here.
You've got a well here, and then you've got co-op wells at Green Tree, at Smith Road, and also inside by Clans. So you've got, you've got really high-power wells. I just think you need to get the keys because you can turn it on from the inside.
I agree, and that's something I can check with them about, to have access to that. Like I said, the more options we have for water closer, it's a matter of saving, I mean.
You're not going to like this question. Why not join the fire district? Why not?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it, but in the interim of all of this happening, it's fire season.
Oh, yeah, I understand. The reason I'm asking is people who are paying taxes like to keep things in their taxing district. And when you start going all over and you're in somebody else's, somebody doesn't like it.
I get it.
I like the idea. There's going to be expenses to do. I think it's a great idea, but my first responsibility is to the district I serve.
I get it.
And that's my concern, and the chief works for our district.
Absolutely.
I say, let's get together, let's sell the district down there and while we're doing it, and then get what you want, and we'll build the system.
Absolutely. And I agree, but I can't be responsible for 51% on a petition.
I know.
So in the interim, it's costing a lot of money for you guys to come up here without getting any taxes anyway. And so since you're already coming, we just thought we, you know, ask if we could get some help and put a volunteer district in. And at the same time, to full work on what does it mean to annex this, and where are we being annexed to? Are we being incorporated? And if so, what are we being incorporated into? And what are the regulations for that? These are other questions I've gotten. And after months of research, I don't know the answers to all that because it means so many different things, right? So we could be annexed into Kingman. That doesn't make sense. Or we could be annexed into Golden Valley. That doesn't make sense. So then what does annexation mean? And what is it going to mean for us here in Meview? And is it going to change the way we live? And that's what people are afraid of. And if people can, if anybody can give me the information, I'm on your side. I don't want my house to burn down. I want my property value to go up. I don't mind paying a little more taxes, but it's the people that have been here a long time that are going to have to sell on that. They're going to need good information.
My motive is that way.
That's, I'm working on building that all up.
It's hard.
For the meeting.
Okay. I'm 27.
Chief, what's your responsibility for out-of-district fires?
Out-of-district fires, if we don't have the personnel, we don't have to respond. We do, but because no one wants to see someone's house burned down. We respond and then we build for the out-of-district.
But I read that somewhere in the law it was that way. If you go to the plan you zone at the courthouse of King, and tell them, you would ask them about it, they have a formula to give you. It will explain to you the requirements for the district. The only thing that you're signing up for to be in the fire district is the fire district.
Okay.
And there will be an opportunity. Sometimes they defend how you people word your district, whether they want to pay the property tax for the fire district.
Right.
Those people that do not pay to the fire district can be billed per fire if they go to it. Or for the air service that we supply. If they pay the property tax on it, it's really just a few dollars compared to what one incident could cost.
I do not mind paying higher taxes because at the same time, I know my insurance is going to go down.
Well, it is a high tax, but it will help your insurance.
It will help my insurance. Thank you guys for listening to me.
I like to get the facts because I have people saying, "Why are you doing this? And why are you spending my money there?"
I agree.
Okay? I love them sometimes when I pay the tax bill. I like the idea. I think it has potentials. I think we have the right man. But volunteers kind of look like this. As one chief told me, he said, "We have lots of volunteers. They're now 70 and 75. They can volunteer."
And we have a homely way of handling people out here.
That is concerning. I understand. I understand how the water system works out there with the keys and that.
Okay, so shall we move on?
Well, I think that...
Walt has a question also.
My, I would make a motion that we authorize the chief to work with you and see what can be formed, but we will make no commitments until we see the formation. Because I just don't believe we can do that in the district.
I already told him I'm going to work on it and keep the sign and petition because I don't like not having protection.
Okay, so the motion is by Larry to have chief work with Suzanne to come up with all the legalities and the steps that are going to be made. So I need a second on that.
Let's take it.
Board vote, Joe?
Yes. Larry, yes.
It seems kind of muddy, but Ellen?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. So that's approved, so you're ready to go.
So now you can work together and let's see what we can do in the fire district and put it together.
Thank you for listening.
Walt has a question.
Yeah, Walt, Kipper, 7288 West Nine Street, Dolan Springs, Arizona. Also on board, Director of the Mount Tipton Water Company in Dolan Springs, so I want to give the Dolan Springs perspective on this. I think it's an excellent idea. There's a whole lot of properties in Dolan Springs that are water-hauled that are not on the water company. The water company stops at 16th Street. The fire district stops at 23rd Street. Also, the water company distribution is mostly along Pierce Ferry Road. Anything way off to either side is water-hauled. There are four hydrants in Dolan Springs, but one at the end of 16th Street doesn't work. The one at Family Dollar flows about 400 gallons a minute. The one down at the Chevron Station flows a little less than 400 gallons a minute. So if you've got a 3,000-gallon tender, it'll take seven, eight minutes to fill the tender. The hydrant up at the school flows 1,000 gallons a minute, so you can fill the tender in three minutes. There's also, and I don't know if you're aware of this, chief, a non-potable stand over by the school.
Yeah, we use that a lot.
Okay. Yeah, the water company would like you to use that, not during a fire, because that's works in our, it doesn't count against us as water loss.
Yeah, we use that to fill all the trucks.
There is possibilities of getting water at the blow-off lines at the end of a water line, the blow-off valves. We typically keep those locked because of water theft problem with everybody with water haul.
Yeah. Okay. We're getting off track. Okay. Do we want to go ahead and try and get the cable? This is 1:30. Go on to I. We're going on to I. We can't, we can't discuss it because it records on, I can't, we're going on to I. So we can see if page ready. Discussion possible, action regarding rescue for Set 15 R-15, purchase of four tires and a cost, that's evidence, that'd be 10, I'm assuming.
So our first ambulance rescue 415 has four tires on the back that are down past the wearboards. So they are needing replaced. I know who previous admin used to use for tires. I called them. I called other companies, and I found a company in Kingman that was about $700 cheaper for the same tire. So for four non-abandoned, free flat repair, free rotations, everything out the door was $11.92, and they were paying almost $1,900. door was $1192, and, uh, they were paying almost $1,900 for the same loss.
And they go, should buy tires.
And he can, uh, I just have to call him, he'll have them there the next morning, and we make an appointment taking it.
It seems like it hasn't been that long ago that they need replaced, Dave.
Who was holding off cars?
Yes.
I need a sec, I'll second that.
Joey, yes?
Yes, Larry?
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
Debbie, yes. It's approved.
I would ask one question. Why do we have to worry about this, as in the budget, it should've been taken care of? I believe you're dealing with safety and vehicles, and it needs to be repaired as long as you don't go over the budget. And the chief says, "We have to do it, we should do it, not stop." It's safe. I don't like it. I think we have a budget, and if he goes over, it comes out of his check. But no, I, 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 safety is cheap. And we've got a vehicle that we shouldn't be running on the road, apparently.
Right.
Okay. You wanna make a motion, I don't need a second? I would make a motion that it's in the budget.
We can't.
We can't? Okay.
We can't.
We don't, we don't, we usually take these kind of things on the, we usually, the chief just usually takes care of it.
You should just...
Yeah, I, I would like to say thank you, chief, for finding tires that are $800 cheaper.
I, I figure that's, it's why, why go, why not shop around?
Exactly.
Yes, that's the same.
Charlotte?
Yes.
So can you please reach out to text?
He's ready.
Oh.
The sheriff's phone.
Oh, okay.
He's ready.
Call you, please. All right. I have no issue with that. Do you have his number? They're going to go back to the financials, which was A and 12. Financial, you're going back to the agenda, I know it was part of what we needed to answer. So we're going to be going back to A. We're going back to here.
Six?
Yeah, we're going back to six, eight, as soon as they get Gabe on the phone. We're going back to financials. And then we'll go to eight, eight and eight.
Hi, Gabe, this is Charlotte, I'm handing the phone to Chair Cast.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, we don't have the Bluetooth today, so we just have to use the phone speaker, so hopefully it's loud enough.
Okay.
Okay, we're going back to six, item six, eight, May 2019 financial report. That would be for you, Gabe.
All right, uh, you, uh, I have to represent the board, uh, so the pay, uh, revenue for the district was, uh, $69,000, $670. The warrant is a bit, uh, quite clean, balances about half that between, uh, property tax revenue, I think they're having, uh, annual, uh, we are having, so my budget, you're saying, of all the categories, um, that's on you, you venture to be the warrant number, uh, our town is, uh, present for this month, uh, this month, uh, from the, uh, market is built in that way, and yeah, so I do this pay of, and it's due, uh, a little ahead of range, so we did cash out on the loan account. Uh, all paid, but by, uh, total, uh, for, uh, $70,000, uh, $310. Our total budget for the month was $1,800. And, uh, two reasons that kind of threw off that narrative, one, we had three acres of the park, uh, that, uh, still in the area, and then, two, uh, we had a wide hall, um, in terms of fire, uh, uh, that was just kind of mainly just timing on that purchase. Uh, here at the date, total revenue is $980,000, uh, $1,000. As I mentioned, we are, uh, by $72,000. Uh, the $900,000, I don't purchase, is property tax revenue, uh, the, uh, annual service revenue, $1,300. We are, I think, we're on a grant, uh, uh, but since we also have the grant, we're bad, so it's kind of a, uh, type of our budget, uh, from, uh, from county standpoint. Uh, all paid, but, uh, our, uh, our, uh, $29,000, uh, $392, uh, who's, who's over, sorry, uh, how much budget, 400 budget, uh, you're saying, we're by, uh, $25,000, $817. Uh, what's your other question? Uh, there's one on the financial report for management.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions for you, Gabe. On the, just your balance sheet is where my questions are at. Um, the first question is, um, under the accounts payable liabilities, the $12,186.65, I think you've answered that before, but what is that money for? Because I think Ellen asked that also, and it never changes.
Uh, so, that, that was about the change in your, uh, what we had in our base, I put this bill coming, carried into this bill, being on the, in, but, and then, if you haven't seen it yet, the bill goes up on, probably on, and then that out, the county, uh, the county, uh, and he's, we're, we're, that's why, uh, we're, uh, what we need to get it off.
Okay. Uh, second question is, under the prepaid expenses, that $34,000, um, what, what is that actually covering? What is that exactly?
So that is, uh, I'm, I'm figuring out, uh, the government, is what that is, those are, uh, expenses that are seen before the end of this year, that actually came to, uh, the policy this year. But we actually, we actually, uh, after, uh, we call, definitely, uh, every, uh, we can get all of them.
Oh, okay. Um, third question is, um, under where it says the assets, the current, uh, current asset, assets, you got total checking and savings. Do we actually have a savings, or is it just checking?
It's just a checking, it's a, it's a, they get all, and the county has savings.
Okay, so is there any way we can have savings taken off of where it says total checking and savings?
Uh, I'll have, but I don't think.
Okay, I was just wondering if I... Okay, I was just wondering if that could be removed, because that could, that could be a little confusing with people. Um, my, my last question is on, on the accounts receivable, the amount, the $638,471.15, what is that actually for, for the time period that it covers?
Uh, so that, you know, related, it's more, our current receivable is, uh, proxy act receivable, that's, 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 that's number. Uh, that number is moving in after, uh, at the end of the year, uh, the county, that's what it said. So that's really what the savings are, plus any annual receivables that are included.
Okay, so is it, so then it's just the current time period, is what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That was my last question. Did anybody else have any questions for you? Oh, you. Okay, here, I'll hand it, I'm handing it down to Charlotte.
Okay.
Hi, Gabe.
Hey, Charlotte.
Under, on other assets, do we, do we still have, uh, have we included the property that the station 41 sits on, and the library, and the chamber? Have you included that yet?
We have not, so far. We're, uh, 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 we're just, uh, just, uh, we're just, uh, um, are the audits, uh, there for, uh, 15, 15 orders, uh, go through the file, uh, and get it all looked at, uh, definitely.
Okay. Because I believe the prior chief, uh, uh, got a, um, the property was confirmed to be in the fire, belongs to the fire district, and got a report back from a realtor to that effect. So I don't know if that would aid you then, or now?
No, no, I, I didn't find out, no, I didn't, um, the amount was recorded on the 1005, I prefer it on the audit, I just take down, that amount was recorded. Uh, so I'm, uh, if you even have the documents, they just go that one back, you're lucky that, so.
Okay. And, um, um, we've got the phone down. The, um, on page six, under professional fees, $2,400, we're budgeted for $1,500, that's separate from legal fees, who's included in that?
Uh, I believe that's, uh, Mike.
That's who?
Uh, Mike.
Oh, your fee, oh, I'm, I thought you were saying Mikey. It's like alcohol. Okay, Mike, I think that's just... Okay, one of you should bring that up. Uh, I have a couple of questions if I could. Um, I happen to be one of those signers on your, on the check for your invoice dated 5/1/2019. And, um, under, we paid $600, additional finance director services, CFA review, PSPRS issue read, TDE, and financial impact of IGA. I'm, I'm particularly interested in the financial impact of the intergovernmental agreement that we were looking at, possibly with Golden Valley. Can you, can you tell me, uh, what you were requested to provide, and what you provided, and when you were requested to provide it, please?
Yeah, so I, I, I got all the details, I'm, 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 so what you were billed for was the chief's request, uh, except for, uh, four members reached out to you for kind of questions on, you know, how much should we have to, is, what can we afford on this, uh, you know, maybe whatever you pay the chief, a little bit, um, in, in, in that nature, but specifically what was related to, uh, um, on the chief's question, um, in the board of directors, what really, you know, what, what is the difference for the pay, uh, for the agreement, um, is either, you know, take over, uh, the whole district, uh, or, uh, just the app for it, or have it off.
Okay.
Uh, and, you know, really, kind of, really, just your financial positions and budget, where they're at, uh, with, 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 uh, yeah, and, uh, that's, that's, I believe about that.
Okay, because, uh, we never got anything. We never, we're presented with that information, so that, when I saw this, I was kind of like, huh, what, what's that? So whatever information you provided to the, then, then chief, never got translated to the board. Okay, so, and then, and then I look at your June 1 statement, and I notice, um, additional finance director services, reports for Golden Valley needing $150. Can you tell me what that was?
Uh, and you had, uh, what, what, specifically, uh, for next, uh, and up there.
What, do you remember what kind of reports?
I remember that, but I didn't, but I don't, uh, but I know it's not very attractive, like you were working with.
Okay. And again, this is not information that was provided to the board. So that's why I was very puzzled about, uh, what we were paying for, when in fact, we did not get that information. So, um, Gabe, I think, or not, I'm just looking here. I think that's it for me, I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
I think mine are more, mine aren't Gabe-related, they're more credit card-related. That could be the place I'd need to ask.
Yes.
Um, I wonder how DSO Industrial is, and what is CCM is. Remember that true, ECM?
Uh, DSO is the company, that was the, the ECM was the computer for the, uh, big red water tanker. They, uh, had to send it off to have it rebuilt.
$1,400. Oh, yeah, they're not cheap.
The, the former chief did that.
Okay.
That was not you?
No.
Notice how fast that came out.
What, the windshield, which vehicle did you use?
That was Rescue 415.
Okay.
And we did your reimbursement?
Oh, super.
So, anyway, I was waiting on that.
And the Microsoft, do you want to include that?
That's a annual, so all of our...
That's year, not just one time? Okay. Microsoft has enough money, they can donate.
Okay, I'm good.
Is there others? Uh, I think we're finished on those questions. Okay, I need a motion to approve the, no, no, that's a report, I'll be further on that one, I'll, I'll do it.
Do I ask about the 500, you take here?
What?
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the May 2019 financials.
Second?
I got Ellen in the second. Board, roll.
Joey, yes.
Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes. Then financials are approved. Um, because we're waiting on you, Gabe, we got, we're gonna go ahead and go into 8A, discussion of possible action regarding the PTO calculations in the amount of $568.86 provided by Gabe for your accounting for Rishi DeMio reference information. That is, also, that's a Charlotte question, so I'm gonna hand her down the phone.
Um, actually, I had to put on the agenda because I, I found it difficult to, to see it, read that. We had a tiny report, the little tiny numbers, and the staff is very kind to, um, blow it up. Um, so, I think you've had a question, so I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Board Member Gray Bower.
Hey, Gabe. Gabe, um, did you get my email this morning? Uh, I dropped it, I think. Oh, okay. Well, I sent you information that, uh, the accrual on this chief of PTO should actually begin the first of April, when the chief was hired as the fire chief. Prior to that, he was, uh, full-time firefighter, paramedic, he was not fire chief, and it was, at that time, personnel were not receiving any sick or vacation time. So, right, so that would be 24.62 hours, uh, from that period, from when he was hired in August 21, 2015, to April 1st, 2015, that should not have been accrued any sick or vacation time. That's 24.62 hours, and that would take up the bottom line, actually, bottom line would be, it would have been over as $180.45, instead of us owing him $568.86.
It's all that in the end.
Yeah, that's all in the end.
So did you want to re-calculate that?
Um, if, if, yeah, um, that's what, um, might have to be. Can we get that recalculated without that 24.62 hours, and then see what you're, what you come up with a run? I had a couple of other little minor differences, but I think they were due probably to calculators, the way you round off, calculated, round off differently, so it was...
Yeah, I, 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 I,
Oh, okay.
The 8B, discussion of possible action regarding PSPRS pension policy posted to the website.
Uh, Gabe, my name is on that with yours. I think we are waiting for Director Campbell to review. Did you review that?
I'm sorry. Did you review this P and PSPRS policy? We were waiting on you to review that so we can get it approved.
I think I did, I bet. I'm gonna see it. I'm gonna study. Oh, my gosh, yes.
He reviewed it.
And that, this will be posted to the website. So I make a motion that we post this PSPRS pension policy to the website. Second. Board, hold.
Yes, Joe.
Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes, that's approved. Um, can, can we call you back, Gabe, when we get down to the budget part? Gabe, you still there?
Yeah, ma'am.
Um, can we give you a call back when we get down to the budget part? Because we still have, um, about six, seven hours before that.
Okay, uh, yeah, for the fourth of July, 3:00, um, that will be available in another meeting and then for me.
Okay. Okay, we will get back to you before 3:00.
All right.
All right, thank you, thank you. I don't think any of the rest of these are gonna take long to do them. We just need to go ahead and do them. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is, we're very, I, no, regarding that, first. J, discussion of possible action regarding LMRD personnel policy, social media. That was Cass and Admin. Um, we've been trying to get this policy passed for, this is just for the personnel. Um, so did everybody finally get to review that policy?
I have a couple of notations from Chair Cass.
Okay.
Um, on page three. But the top, number five, shall not conduct any political activities while on duty slash shift through social media related to LMRD. Maybe I put a question mark there. I guess maybe my question was, I know this is about social media. I'm assuming that they couldn't be able to do political activities, period, while on duty.
And where was that again, Charlotte?
On page three, uh, number five, uh, up at the top before B.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like to me. That they cannot do any political activities.
And then, um, where it talks about district person, uh, B1, district personnel are perceived as persons themselves as private citizens on social media sites to the degree that their speech does not appeal or impede the performance of their duties and peer discipline. Um, and harmony among coworkers or negatively affect the public perception of the district. No employee while speaking as a private citizen on a matter of public concern shall speak in such a way as to cause actual harm or disruption to the mission and functions of the district. Um, I would wonder in here where, um, board members, where it impacts not only functions of the district, if that would be not only board members, but also people running through the board.
That is, this is strictly personal. Charlotte, we haven't done the board member policies. This is strictly for staff.
No, I know that, but I'm talking about if, whereas they can, uh, in, in having their, uh, right to free speech, if that free speech allows them to have any comment on board members, actual or people running through the board. That's temporary, that's what I mean.
So you're, you're wondering if they are allowed to state stuff as stated of board members and ones running?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm thinking, um, Chair Cass would be probably at the end of that sentence, right above number two. Shall speak in such ways to cause actual harm or disruption to the missions and functions of the district. Where, where, I guess that's, I'm raising that question, that there, there may be something we want to talk about putting in there that employees cannot, um, make any negative comments about board members and the board people running through the board. And if so, where that was taken here. That's the one thing. And then coming down to number four, speech that violates his policy may form the basis for discipline if seen detrimental to the board, to the district, and then I put slash board. Because I don't know if you would consider the board, um, if it's implied that the board would be part of the district.
I would say the part of the district, so I don't think we really looked at it.
All right. And then on page five, violations. So there's gonna be a separate one for board members, is what you're saying? Yes, ma'am. All right. And I will take that number five off. So I guess it goes back to my one issue about, um, we don't want employees, uh, if they have an issue, they come through the chain of command, and if they have an issue with the board member or someone running through the board. So where do we put that? How do we handle that? That's the only thing I have.
We could just add it to the violations. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, violations.
Okay, I'm good with that. How would you read?
You want the reporting on violations to go through proper chain of command?
Um, I, I think my thing is I don't want him speaking negatively on social media about board members.
So that we can add into the.
Where would, where would that fit?
How about page four, under C2, I could make a D.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll take a look back here and come on that, and I'll take a look at, at the next meeting.
Unless you want to approve changes.
I, I just would like to see the, that's all.
I'd be in with the board member.
So board member and the people running through the board.
So, um, Madam Chair, do I need to make a motion that the direct, of the chief will direct the administrative assistant to make that change and bring it back to the next meeting for approval?
Yes.
I second that. Oh, Lord.
Joe, yes.
Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes. And Debbie, yes, so that's approved. Um, discussion of possible action regarding update on LMRD volunteer service application on website and subscription button on website. Ellen and Ellen.
Karen's already pre-located me with this, but for the public's information, um, she's been working on the button. It's got, had some hitches because it requires a, an additional, uh, fund, an additional fee for making that button actually active, where it will actually, um, do the automatic, um, sending of information. So what it's gonna have to do is it will send a message to her, she'll forward it to me, that I will then send a, um, agendas, minutes, whatever, to a list that I will have in my email.
So the subscription button was activated and we, we worked, we worked on it. And, um, if you sign up, it gives us a list of our subscribers, which I'll export to Director Gray Bower. So it saves some dollars, not having it be an automatic, automatic subscription, but, but it'll still function the same. I'll just have to be on the wall and make sure I send things out and remember to do that, so, um, I think that's all. Oh, volunteer services applications. Those are on the site. They're on the site, right on, good girl. Okay. That's all for that.
Okay, that was just information only then.
Yes.
No action on that one. Um, L, discussion of possible action regarding information about command vehicle use for in and out of the district upon placement being put into service. Administration, Keppler.
Uh, we have a vehicle that's been, or it's being purchased.
Being.
Being purchased due to be back in the district, probably early, earlier than the beginning of July.
Um, it should be in the district probably later than Sunday or Sunday.
Okay.
Well, that'd be July.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's okay, that's all right.
Don't forget the Washington accent.
I'm good with that. Um, chief, it seemed to come with a lot of stuff. What else does the district have to do, attract to?
Um, we do, they did put new graphics on it. We just have to put our logo on it instead of theirs. Um, and then I'm in the process now of getting the radio for it and getting it programmed to our frequencies for 118 and repeat and all that. So that's, that's in the process through, um, same company they did ours for the ambulance when we got it and everything. So, but other than that.
Just the logo, radio?
The logo's, everything else is good to go on it and registration.
It won't need tires? It always needs tires.
We, when we approve the purchase, we, we hold off on where, where will be located, how will be used, and that's what this is about today. And certainly after talking with our attorney, it makes sense that the command vehicle be with the chief, that he drive that to and from work and use it to go to meetings and any other LMRD functions and callouts that he has. So I made a motion that the command vehicle, um, be the chief's vehicle.
I'll second that. Board, board, hold.
Joe, yes.
Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes, that's approved. Um, M, discussion of possible action regarding advertisement cost for fire chief and suppression review of NT and daily dispatch and other advertisements outlets and review of part-time, full-time applications and hiring process for chief. Update on ads placed for part-time, full-time chief administration. Reva, Keppler, S.
I'd like, I think we have a chief, and I see a waste of money. I think that we should set it up to where the chief has, let's say, a six-month probationary period, or three months. But we have a chief, his shirt says chief, doesn't say interim chief. I don't like the word. He's responsible. I find him to be credible. I would make a motion that we get rid of the word interim and make it fire chief, and he is the fire chief. And we set up, if necessary, a probationary period.
That's motion, is that great?
What's that? Yes, it is.
I'll second that.
Uh, further discussion, Chair?
There we go.
That's fine. I lose it home all the time.
Hey, go ahead, Charlotte. We agreed when we hired a person who was Tim to fill the current slot, that it was temporary. Our last hired fire chief was an interim fire chief. He was not a, the permanent fire chief. Um, ah, we, we're only in week four. I think, I commend him for doing a heck of a job, no doubt about that. But, but this is a temporary situation. Our contract requires temporary situation. And interim implies that there's a period of time until we then make that determination. It's permanent. I, I'm, I'm absolutely baffled by we're gonna now make this person permanent. Um, that may happen down the road, but I think that we need to follow through with our plan, which was to advertise and see what applications come in and make that determination at that time. Um, and so I'm totally opposed to taking the word interim off. I'm totally opposed to not advertising for, um, folks for this position. And, um, I think that would be a huge disservice to this district if we did that.
Oh, I'm gonna disagree with you.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay.
I originally thought we had made a mistake. After talking, learning some history, I have changed my mind. I think we have a chief that has the PR skills and the ability to make this district come together. I don't want to lose him. I have talked to four other people who've been chiefs, and they, and I talked to the sheriffs, and I can't pay people like your money to come. You've got a person who's qualified, who's doing a good job. I say he should be chief. He should have a probationary period, didn't end a probationary period. If he does something wrong, you can discharge him, but he's the fire chief.
I think the, uh, the interim pretty much covers that probationary period. And we've already got the contract written that way. It needs to change everything all back around. I just built our.
Oh, you need to change the.
Well, we were instructed that after the six-month probation, it could be changed to discharge.
Right, exactly.
Because the way it's written now, it's interim.
Right.
He's on probation.
Forever.
Well, no.
The contract doesn't change that.
What I, what I would like to see is, we have to, we have to, we have to advertise for personnel. I would like to see that part done.
Yes.
And hold off on fire chiefs and give a period of time for improvement. So he's hit the deck running, and I'm impressed. Up once, I done it. I too thought we made a mistake initially. But I think he's gonna do it. He doesn't, might have, not have the experience and the training, but he's getting it. And he's, he's going out there and doing what he, he does.
Uh, Director, Director Tim, I think to resend, and Joe would resend it second, and then you can, where's your motion?
Do you resend?
I understand.
Unless you want to be called for a vote, or you want to resend your vote?
No, I want him to be the fire chief.
Okay, wait, I need to call it, let me finish this motion, then we can redo another one.
It has to do with this motion, oh, here. What if Tim is abducted by extraterrestrial eagles or something? I can't say aliens anymore, okay, that's a whole different. And, and now we have someone that, um, after three weeks, I, I agree, I'm impressed. I am impressed. Um, but again, I think that our intention was to, you know, the big issue is, well, we don't know who's out, no one will come out here, da, da, da. I'm really worried about, suddenly after three weeks, we've just completely changed the direction we're going in. And I'm not saying that we may not end up hiring Tim full-time permanently, but I, I don't think the motion is a concern.
Here you go.
Okay, we need to clarify that motion again, so we know which way.
Director, do you have a motion to remove the word interim, uh, six months probation and no advertisements for fire chief? He can reword his motion to leave the word interim in. If he, if he chose, if he doesn't want to, then you call for a vote, and then see if it passes or fails.
I think we know that I stand on the word fire chief.
So do I.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote.
What does that mean with the rest of the motion, that we not?
We can redo the, we can redo the, the new motion and not the motion that we need to.
So you need two motions?
Well, we, yes, because we have to finish Larry's first, and then, and Larry's.
Would you read the motion back?
Our advertising motion was to remove the word interim from fire chief. Have a probation of six months. If he fell for probation at six months, he's discharged. And no advertisement for fire chief.
Was the wording of interim even an agenda item?
It's in every piece of paper here.
No, it's not the agenda.
Yes, it's not there.
You can't, no, so we can't, we can only, you have to amend it that. The interim has come out, the other chief can stay, so you need to amend your.
Whatever I'm supposed to do, I did. All I know is, he's the fire chief. In my opinion, he deserves the title. He's done a better job than anybody else can do in three weeks. I support him. I didn't start it. I do now after some studying and people's input. I want him to be the fire chief.
It's not deserved.
Okay, you tell me what I need to.
So we need to, either, you need to amend your motion.
Amend your motion.
To, I hereby amend my motion to make.
No, no.
No.
You can only talk about the ads, the advertisements, and for fire chief and with suppression set.
So I amend the motion to eliminate, is that what you mean?
That, I'm not, I'm not.
I know, I know.
Just rescinding the motion.
I'll rescind the whole motion and start over, and here's what the motion is.
Okay, God, if Joe agrees, send your motion.
Say yes.
So, are you rescinding your motion? You rescinded his motion. I need you to resend your second, if we need to or not.
Okay. I hereby make a motion that Tim become the fire. Okay. I hereby make a motion that Tim become the fire chief.
We can't do that.
No, 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 no.
Let me do the motion.
Okay, you tell me you do it.
The item is about advertisements for fire chief.
And I'm telling you that. And we do not advertise for a new fire chief and that the fire chief has a six-month probationary period where he can be discharged for any violations. Bang.
Yes, yes.
Well, I don't have a word, but-
You just have to make your motion around. You think we'd be advertising it as money?
I don't like, I, I don't think that they're finding money. It's a waste of district's money.
Okay, well, just make a motion for not advertising for the fire chief.
I make a motion to not advertise for the fire chief. I'll second that.
Call to the, call to the board.
Joe, yes.
Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, no.
Debbie, yes.
Fire chief, yes, okay.
One day.
Now you need to discuss.
Now we can do the suppression. I'll make a motion that we place it-
Wait, wait, one second. If you just inform me, there's one thing with Daily Dispatch. It's $575 for six weeks in Arizona, and it's $1,600 if you want to go national with it.
That's just for the suppression stack?
Well, any ad I call, Daily Dispatch, and to place their ad, they do it in two different, you can place it in the state you're in. So for, if we, if we put in the ad for suppression in Arizona, it's five, $575 for six weeks. The, the ad only runs the six weeks or you put a date. So it says, in your ad, it says this position closes. If it's before that six weeks, that's when it closes, when you put that date. But it's 575 for the six weeks or if you want to advertise nationally, where it goes out all over the United States, it's 1,600.
Is there not a fire, an association here, Firefighters Association, that would put the ads and forms through the fire?
That everyone you put in ad, you're gonna pay a fee.
I'm just saying, a, a chief's association or whatever.
All the chief's locations charge here.
Yeah.
You've got some freebies as well, haven't you, here?
Didn't ask you.
Well, APTA is free, but that's not-
Does that go throughout the state, APTA?
So we're already covering the state. These are really dispatches that help us in this regard.
And then NTN, we can advertise for suppression personnel on there. And I believe it was 625?
Yeah, but then it's got $690.
690, sorry.
Plus the $575 registration fee. So that's about $500. And that, but that goes national too, actually.
Yeah, that, um, NTN is national.
Is there any other way we can get personnel without advertising?
What about in Deeds? InDeeds.com.
Phyllis Sagan.
Hang on, I didn't recognize you.
I'm sorry.
Because there's a, there's a website out there. It's called InDeeds.com. And it's basically what the hospital uses and all that out of Kingman. When you get on it, it's just a big old registry of all-
Can I possibly send it out? I don't even know. I have an admin group.
There's a bunch of-
And I can send it out for them, for the ladies, families, and they can disperse it, but-
There's a bunch of websites you can go to looking for a job, type in what you're looking for. And, yeah. And that don't cost, I don't think it costs any, I don't know. But-
We'll have to check with that one.
I think it's a waste of money.
Phyllis, have any questions, though?
Yes, you do.
Phyllis Sagan, Lake City Drive, Dolan. Um, again, we're circling back to Utah. A lot of your fire departments, Eden County, have social media that they utilize to advertise, open positions anywhere for the MFPs, medics, firefighters. And it doesn't cost any. So-
Do we need somebody to pass one page?
Well, yeah, it's actually, Seratour, Sporting, Eagle Valley, Utah County, Fire, they all have that stuff. Like, Niden Fire District, I know through the entire state. I know that some small areas like Snoya, Elgin, Tucson, et cetera, have their own little page, only for the purpose to provide information, no discussion, that puts those possibilities out there.
Thank you, Phyllis. Karen?
Uh, well, yeah, with the social media page, we are, we are giving records attention. So there would have to be information only.
Okay. So were you gonna, you started the motion.
Oh, to, uh, for the suppression stuff.
Yeah, I'll resend that motion on the, uh, place of an ad at this time.
Okay, so.
Can we get a reader board and place it, Fire Station Looking For? And put Derek and see if somebody driving by the horns of the skyline wants to come out here.
We have a reader board. Maybe we can take the word.
Exactly.
Suzanne, Racy, meet you. I'd be happy to help you guys set up as, uh, social media.
Well, we want to try staying away from that because there's a lot of legalities that go with it and a lot of the record retention and all that. The less we have to keep the check out.
I agree, but disagree. I think that social media today is the only way you're gonna attract younger people, um, to jobs, to attention, to all of it. That younger people do not get to do anything but social media.
That's true.
And we have these social media for managing different things in the nonprofit world.
Anyways.
I know, like, Kingman Fire and Alden have their, they have their Facebook page that's information like, uh, they put out when the curb bans or if, um, you know, there's gonna be traffic closed because, due to an incident. And they do put a iron on there also. I know all the fire companies have it.
I know from personal experience, if my wife didn't read social media, I wouldn't know half of what's going on. We have a newspaper, somewhat a newsletter here. MCA and comp will be more than happy to put information in for you. I don't know about Dolan Springs. If there's something down there, we can't. I don't know about some of the other places. But you could certainly tell other fire agencies who have people coming in and applying. No, we don't have opening, but-
Well, I, I agree, um, with what Suzanne said. Every younger, um, and I know from when I went through the Fire Academy and everything, as soon as these guys get out of academies and stuff, they're looking online for, for a job. And that's, social media's a big, big wave for them to find.
Would, would the Fire Academy be a bad place that we couldn't let them know of openings that we have?
Uh, we can. Uh, I know MCC is getting approval on their new Fire Academy. We can advertise there. That, um, putting it out, because a lot of them put out flyers when they graduate the academy, that, you know, to look at, look into. So we could, that would be something else.
Definitely. I see here in this article, this item, other advertising outlets should allow them to make a motion that, that we pursue the Facebook page for the district?
You can make your motion to direct staff.
To direct the chief, to direct the, her business district.
Yes.
Still make chief be the one that, um, to establish a Facebook page for LMRFD for informational purposes only.
I'll second that motion.
Ooh, can we put our main notices up there, Tim? It would be useful.
I have to second that motion, too? I'll second that or the other motion.
Can I amend that a little bit?
If you have a second, so you can discuss.
Okay, I would like to see if we can also add in for her to check into, like, InDeeds and those, like Monster and Deeds, those other ones online. They're, they're job services.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And to include those into that, to, if they're free, set them up.
Okay. Oh, then my motion to include, to, uh, let's see, okay, so I'm in my motion to read, um, to direct the chief, to direct the administrative assistant to create a Facebook page for our district for informational purposes only, for posting jobs, uh, among any other informational things that we can do. And to include researching job services. Got it?
Don't have the names. So that's what we made our motion.
I'll second that.
Call to the board?
Joe, yes.
Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes.
Charlotte, yes.
And Debbie, yes. So that's approved.
Now I'm starting to meet this agent.
Um, and discussion of possible action regarding options for EMS paramedic chief and/or information regarding battalion chief position and job description, review of funding model, the possible direction of chief for hiring a battalion chief, possible position, and creation of line items and budget for fiscal year 1920 for battalion chief position. Bowler and Kepfer.
There's a couple of issues that have come up, um, of, of late. One of them has to do with succession. Uh, our, our, our chief had a succession. Um, and if that fire chief was out of district, had an informal gentleman's agreement with an employee out of district that was not an employee of LMRFD. So I think the very first thing is we need to establish a succession plan. And you all know that I've been very big on part-time chief. And , um, the question was, well, you know, you need a full-time chief and how can you, how can you run a district unless you have a full-time chief? And in the past, we had an inter-agency agreement with NACB to provide a part-time chief. And a couple of months ago, we were looking into the idea of contracting for part-time chief services with Dolan Bowler. Along with that, I kept thinking, well, how can we fill in the gap succession plan if there's a call-out? Our current chief is in Kingman, good forty-minute drive to Dolan, not to mention much further to Meadview. How can we address that, that gap? And in our own policies and procedures, there is a description for, and in the past, LMRFD has had a battalion chief. And that battalion chief could be the one that could do the call-outs. And the chief could delegate to the battalion chief other items that need to be done. When the chief is on vacation, it's the battalion chief that then fills in as part of the succession plan. So I brought this up to, um, certainly it's up to the chief to hire for that position, but it's not an active position right now. And it would require the board's motion to, um, reactivate that position and create the planning board. So I, that's how this got onto the agenda.
And my item, it kind of flows into that as mine, what had to do with the organizational chart, updating that, which actually ended up being, oh, but they kind of mixed the others together. And relating to that, our organizational chart, this is our old organizational chart that was way overlooked. And we can't even begin to think of, of man and that again. And that's what stuck us in 2013. So Karen did us the favor of paring it down a bit. And I would still, I would like to see taxpayers at the very top of that because taxpayers are our ultimate employers. And I would like to see that, to tell the truth. And I would like to see over here an administrative assistant, office assistant, eventually. I know we're not gonna fund that immediately, but I'd like to see that put in there while we're updating this organizational chart.
The thing is, though, is if we don't have one, we shouldn't be on here until-
Well, there's a whole bunch down there that are clear. We may not ever get any more, but what's on here that we don't have besides the battalion chief?
Um, as far as I know, we've got shift A, B, and C for '41 and A, B, and C for '43. We have a volunteer suppression volunteer person. We have a volunteer clerk.
Yeah, okay. I thought we had, still had some individuals under that.
No.
So we just got the, the full-time shifts.
Yes.
Two persons.
Yes.
I have a question on the battalion chief requirements. How do you think they have to meet the same as our chief, be a paramedic? Because there are more medical calls out here than fires. Therefore, that person is going to have to have either, whatever, and I don't know the law here, but he's gotta be a medic-type person. A paramedic is what I understand from talking to other people. I don't know. But he has to have those requirements because just hiring another person to fill the gap doesn't solve the problem.
I think more, more priority than a paramedic would be a full-time person that can respond quickly and come and tell the chief if he's up here.
My thing is, is where is the money to pay for a battalion chief? Dave's told us many times, even in this last one, that we don't have the money for battalion chief.
I mean, we'd ask them for money for battalion chief.
Well, it's been brought up. I've heard you guys asking about battalions. And I know he says we have all the money for personnel.
I thought he said we had plenty of personnel.
No, I don't, I was saying, I'm just saying, that's what he keeps telling us, is there's no money for the battalion chief. There's no money for the-
There's six positions, budgeted, or pre-owned, part-time, part-time filled.
Battalion chiefs, they cost you maybe $5,000 less than your chiefs. So there's $54,000 plus benefits. But-
Negotiable, I see.
My opinion is, chief, do you have people that you could, and I'm not going to hold you to promote to perhaps a captain's position and not raise the budget?
Here, here's, here's my thought on this whole thing. I would rather see the money we're gonna use for so-called battalion chief put towards our wildlife program, something that's gonna bring money into our district, or, you know, money to hire a full-time personnel, paramedics that we are using POCs. That's, that's my opinion on it.
Fire versus medical, what's the percentage?
Calls?
Yep, percentage wise.
Ninety percent of calls are medical.
Okay.
But then we've got $10,000 going out here for fire, like fire equipment, fire for GPE equipment.
Well, you have to, you have to have it, have to go through, fire any type of fires. Otherwise, have an accident, you don't have that money. No. The biggest concern out here, out here is many, I don't know about Dolan Springs. Out here, I hear medical.
Until you have a fire, and then everybody's, everybody's on fire.
I know.
You gotta get there quick.
I know. I will tell you, if they not have shown up at my house two years ago, I might not be here.
Well, I agree, medical is essential. We can't, but we are a fire district. We need fire personnel.
But we also are, we actually fire EMS district.
Well, the fire district is what the taxpayer should make sure of.
Uh, can I ask a question of the chief?
Chief.
What is your succession plan?
I, so I wanna fully staff our, what we have budgeted for full-time staff, paramedic and EMT on each shift, full-time. So we're not relying on POCs. We, we cannot take money from the six full-time positions we have to. Um, I, I don't see honestly the need for a battalion chief right now. I'm there every day. And if I was to use a battalion chief, I would prefer it being a medic because he's gonna do the same things I do. He would have to go get drugs. He would have to get drug boxes. He would have to transfer. I know Ellen keeps saying she wants someone there quick. Okay, our crews on scene, right, are crews that are on duty. Even if I have a battalion, battalion chief and he's not on duty, our crews are gonna be the first ones there. So you still have to call a battalion chief out to cover. That's doing my job. So where, where are we, what's, what's given?
Well, I haven't gotten a question. What's your succession plan?
Uh, eventually, if we have the revenue, I would like to see a fire department structured like most normal departments. A chief down the road, a battalion chief, captains, which we have no captains. We don't have the budget or the personnel to do that.
Okay.
But I would like to see, if we have the budget and everything to do it, a structured fire department.
Uh, I guess my question isn't very clear. If you're going on vacation, who's left in charge?
The paramedic that's on duty.
A POC? A POC?
Ah.
POC.
If he's a paramedic, yes.
So if you're gone two weeks, the person who's part-time is now left in charge?
The paramedic that is on duty each, each day. But out of all of our paramedics now that are POCs, most of them are captains in other departments.
So it's a POC on duty on, on any shift that's a paramedic?
Paramedic.
Is the one who'd be left in charge?
Yes.
And how do they then communicate among themselves? Because they're only part-time, so they go off duty and now somebody else is on duty. How do they communicate, how would I know who to reach if, well, it's Joe, but he's, he's only on duty today and, and Sally is on duty tomorrow and the day after that. How, how, I guess that it doesn't make sense from the communication.
So...
That's, that's all. The succession means when you're not there, who's next in charge? And I heard what your answer was. But it doesn't make sense to me for consistency to have five, six different people that might be left in charge when you're on vacation. I'm just saying.
Okay, we have three other, our three shifts, okay? We have a group of POCs, the same ones work there every shift, every shift. So I have a group of POCs that work A shift, B shift, and C shift that are paramedics. Okay, you want me to leave an EMT in charge, okay? He cannot get drugs, we've gone through this over and over, he cannot get drugs.
No, I'm not saying why, I'm just saying succession.
Hold on, let me, let me, okay. There, for someone to be in charge, they have to be able to same capacity as I am. They have to be able to do what I can. I cannot leave an EMT in charge because he cannot do what we need done. He cannot get drugs, he cannot do the drug boxes. So the paramedic that is on duty would be in charge for that shift. And he would get pass-on to the next paramedic that comes on shift. That's how, that's how it works. That's how it works in every fire department.
They would basically update the next one coming on, what's going on.
Exactly.
Same thing happens in the police department, every switch shift.
Every fire department works the same way. So the chief in Golden Valley goes on, his, his captain's in charge. If they have a problem, they're, they should not be calling the chief. The captain should be able to handle it, unless it's all the world blown up, then they call the chief. The chief, that's what the chain of communication is, the captain's handling. And there are paramedics on each shift, and each shift has a different captain. So they pass them on to the next shift, and the next shift, and that's how it goes, and that's how, I mean, every fire department.
So, so they have a logbook that they fill out?
Absolutely.
And they refer back to that logbook when they come on duty?
Yep.
So a captain in one of these shift positions that's already budgeted for, bump him up a little bit and pay to be available, because he lives in district. It's kind of nice, I know, okay, I might not say it, Mike Petway shows up because he lives here, and he shows up for every fire that happens.
That's, that's not always true, I've been on fire, but Mike has not showed up.
We can't talk about this.
But I mean, there's, there's, I understand.
Oh, sorry.
Can't talk about personnel.
Okay, scratch that name, I didn't say that. We have a local that lives here that shows up for ninety-nine, ten fires.
We've got about twenty minutes before we've got to get feedback on the phone, so we've got to decide what we're doing with this. So we need a motion.
We need to update this organizational chart.
Well, yeah, that's, so we need to finish with the end. I know that we said they're both the same, so...
Oh, well, they kind of overlap.
Yeah, so since they're both separate things on the agenda, we need to go ahead and finish with the end.
Okay.
So I, are we making a motion on that or is it just a discussion?
Just a discussion.
Okay, no action, correct?
Correct.
Okay, next one is O, discussion of possible action regarding the direction to administration to update revised LMRFDS unit command organizational chart. Ellen said that was important.
Well, what brought this to my attention, because we recently learned that it's a legal gentleman's agreement that our previous chief undertook while he was gone, that let this district, the huge, huge risk, talk about risks, if there'd been an incident, we would have been sued out of existence. So there needs to be somebody in charge when the chief leaves and it's not me being so...
Okay, we determined that.
Person outside one of the districts. How do we nail that down and make sure that's understood?
Well, he does explain how it's being done, so are we just going to change the person?
How do we put that in this organizational chart? So would this scratch battalion chief and we put fire chief that goes down to each one of these? Or do they, do they cross over to each other, so that they're, they're in charge of each other? They're in charge of passing the information along?
Well, I would say it should go down from the chief down to the...
A, B, C going down this way, so that they're all in charge of each other?
Well, they won't be in charge of each other.
Passing the information along.
But they're not in charge of each other, they're just passing information on. So it's more like the chief, and when he's got shipped A, B, and C, those are each individuals, so it was made a bit behind the idiosyncrasies, just make it so the chief...
So the chief goes down to each one of these?
Yep.
So each, each shift has a pass-on, every, when they're getting off shift. So the paramedic on shift tells the oncoming paramedic what's going on, what they ran, what needs to be done, everything.
I felt the comparison.
And then it's, it's all in a logo. It's going to be written down.
And then they all know that they're in charge, paramedic that comes on duty is in charge of the fire. And figuring out where to go, where the streets are, who does where, they'll follow GPS, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, that's, that's something.
Yeah, so, okay, okay, so I guess we need to revise this.
To make a motion?
Oh, so make a motion that our organizational chart be revised to reflect...
Taxpayers at the top?
Taxpayers at the top, fire chief directly responsible for each of the A, B, and C shifts and each of the 41, 43 stations. Is that right?
I'll second that. Board vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ellen, yes. Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes, that's approved.
I'm sure you're listening.
Um, key discussion regarding case S-815-CR-20119, 2019-30820, McCord, up to Kepfer, Tower.
Do we want to make a call to the county attorney?
I don't know, I didn't know what this was all about, because to me, I don't know why we keep putting on here until it's done and then...
They don't need a monthly update.
And why? Why do we need to keep getting a monthly update? If people want to know what's going on, they can go out and look at the tapes.
If this is wrong, the funds disappeared.
Yes.
The funds have been repaid, being charged, being tracked.
It's not even...
We're not even involved in it anymore, the end of the term, yes.
So I would like to make a motion to bring this back onto the agenda once it's all finalized and reports are finished. Because I don't see a purpose to keep...
Well, any discussion, please?
Discussion. We need a second.
We were embezzled $24,000. Some of us voted to move it on to the district attorney for pursuit, where is that now? It's with the district attorney, I as a board member, I as an organization that got screwed out of $24,000 want to be, be kept track of what's happening with that. Why are we continuing to shove it under a rug? What are we afraid of? I think that the taxpayers and we as a board are entitled to this information. And the chair, until this month, had been contacting to find out what's the status. I get the sheet in here, I'm not a legal person, I really don't know what that means, so I sure would like to know what's going on. And I think as an organization, we should be following it until it's finalized. The fact that he paid it back doesn't take away from the fact that this is an issue that affects our district. And so it concerns me that we're doing this shoving it under the rug business. There should be transparency here.
I, I don't believe it's shoving it under the rug. I believe he paid it back. Now it's in criminal court where they can do what they want. And we're not involved in it. Yes, it was wrong. Yes, the district attorney is handling it. We stay out of the district attorney's business.
I'm not getting in the district attorney's business, I'm asking for an update of what's going on with the case. I'm not getting in his business, Larry.
I think that the district attorney will tell you once it's settled. And I guarantee the newspapers will tell you. But I've heard both sides of the story. I know nothing but the story, but I know the district attorney is handling it and they expect to get a conviction. That's what I've been taught.
Who's told you that, Larry?
District attorney's office.
They expect to get a conviction. What else have you learned, Larry? You as a board member called them and it's the board chair is the one who contacts on behalf of the board, so...
And I can call anybody I want, as long as it's not a board meeting. And I just, I asked the question because I'm not into it. And they told me they expect a conviction. I can't ask for any more than that.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor that's more than that.
Yeah.
So, motion was to wait on the updates on this once it's finalized. I did a first, Larry did a second. I'm going to call the board.
Do you have a vote or do you have a motion?
I'm not having a motion. Joe? Yes or no on the motion on the floor?
Can I ask a motion, just can you read it back to me?
Exact motion.
Director Cass motion to postpone getting any updates until it's finalized.
Okay, yes.
Joe's yes, okay.
Larry is yes.
Ellen, Ellen's no. Charlotte's no, Debbie's yes. What a surprise. All right, I approve of your comments.
Pardon me?
That wasn't appropriate.
Well, since you didn't want to send it to begin with, it doesn't, and you catch it up in raps for the longest time. It doesn't surprise you, the order, okay, thank you.
Fine, your turn. Our next item is open budget public hearing. Public comment about the, public comments about the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920. Board members cannot take action during the public hearing. Did we have anybody in the public that had any more questions or comments on the budget?
Does anybody need to see it?
Oh, they're pulling up the budget.
Nope. Okay. One more. Okay. Closing a budget, public hearing. No further public comments about the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920, public hearing closure. Well, next item on the agenda is number 11. Budget discussion of possible action regarding final amendment or adoption of the budget for fiscal year 1920 for Lake Maharan Fire District certification for board chairs and board clerk as prepared by Mr. Brudrau.
I make a motion, we approve the budget as presented. I can't.
Yeah, you can, I guess.
Try again.
Well, Director, can we just...
Oh, did she walk right?
She needs to... Call for a five-minute recess.
We're, I'm calling for a five-minute recess, so that, do we need to be wrapped in this or something?
Nobody lives in a fire district at $3.25 a house. You can't even go to McDonald's for $3.25. So Team Chad, I remember I can't do that. Smile. Why all those fire chiefs going to have this? They couldn't have for a while because of their... But they couldn't, I remember, they couldn't do that. Couldn't have long as they... No, they didn't. When I saw the new fire chief or a district guy, I wasn't involved, it looks like Tom Selle. Yes. Go on, putting other people in. No, I don't, I'm a paramedic, and I dropped out of hospital, wish you luck, paramedic, little buck. Can you tell me? Nobody, nobody knew what you were doing. You can't, there are no medics who only pay the... Usually two or three years, well, I may be sure. I know what I was doing. Thank you.
Right.
She has a little...
Right, right. It was your first one, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you can't... Most attacks is coming in October.
October and March, April, March.
Is the bigger part in October. Yeah, I do. It's just $6,000 a year. I'm curious, are fire service in the hospital? I promise to behave.
Are we finished? No, we're only back to the right. Yes.
Never.
Correct, so we're ready, so we're ready. That's okay, that's okay. Right there. No messages down to the real chair. Hi, Danny, we're going over the final item on the budget, or the agenda, which is the budget.
Yeah.
So it's 11:80, discussion of possible action regarding final adoption of the budget for fiscal year 1920 for Lake Maharan Fire District certification for board chair and board clerk as prepared by Mr. Brudrau, board. So I guess we're ready to, if there's more questions on the budget. I do have a few, because I actually got quite a bit of time to go over this the last month. So I guess I'll start with some questions and then move down. On our budget, go ahead. Yes, we did, nobody had any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My first one is, you have our carryovers projected at 500,000, where does that reflect on our budget? Where's that on the line item?
There's, we're not utilizing any carryovers to cover budget of the recovery reserve.
Uh huh.
It's not be, not in the budget of the...
Okay.
The purpose of the, yeah, so we, our carryover, if you go into financial reserves, this is a, let me offer, and budget of revenue, you cover the expenditure.
Okay, where does those, where do those reserves reflect on this budget, or do they not?
They do not reflect on the budget.
Oh, okay. Is that what the fund balances on the five-year projection? Is that what the fund balances on the five-year projection? Okay. What is the delinquency for the 32,529?
So, that is just made for.
You're faded out.
That is our, that's the, you have, uh, the highest receipt. However, reportedly, I have that number and 8%. I expect to stick and, uh, based on other houses that we have this year. We do have it last year. But we've got numbers of only 5%. Uh, because we have this ambulance collection that we have now.
Okay, so that's for ambulance collections then, correct?
So, that's property taxes.
Oh, property taxes, sorry. Okay. Okay. My next question is, what is the fire services income? Because you have 2,000.
Yeah, but it could just be going out if they're going.
So, that's like an estimate that we may get?
Yes.
On the asset disposals, just, that's, this is just more of a clarification. Is there any way that I can have, we can have that changed to asset surplus? So that the public would know more so that that's the stuff that we're getting rid of? Instead of classifying it as a disposal? Would we put surplus in that stock?
Uh, yeah, maybe, uh, yeah. How about, uh, throw me through a mail matter?
Yes. Yeah, it's just more clarification for the public, so they know what that is.
Okay.
Um, under the grants, you don't have anything under grants. And from what I'm understanding is if we receive any grant money, we won't be able to really do much with it because it's not in the budget to spend. So, should we have some kind of money there projected that we might get? Just in case we get it?
So, so, uh, for the captain, all accounts, you were okay to go over budget. If revenue in over budget is better developed, uh, if we have that. Uh, but if you think it's something significant, I always recommend you put it in.
Okay.
Uh, so, it's, it's cut up to you. You know, like the last, we had the, when there was a big, there was water grants. They were projecting, uh, what was it there? But they don't want to do the transition, uh, change and everything. I don't know, I didn't know any grants or anything like that. It's, we want to have a motion here for.
Oh, okay. Okay.
If you're going to work.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I just know that the budget I deal with, with the calendar, we usually have to have that kind of stuff in there. Under the professional services for you, is that for you and auditor?
Yeah.
Okay, and how much is your annual? Out of that amount?
Much player.
Last year, which one was it?
I have professionals. So, my challenge is, uh, a few years of billing. Uh, it is the $5.3 million for.
Okay, so, spark that with the auditor. So, the difference in that price would be your fees then? So, yours would?
Yeah, there's eight, like, for the audit. There, in the audit, there's $5,000 for R B. Actually, they had about 6,000 additional, uh, for any credit services that you need.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, I would, I would have to come from R B for, uh, it gets the coverage for any theater. Uh, I think, I think, well, having four, uh, having four, twenty-four positions and things like that. Yeah, looking at changes, whatever, that's just for any, anything that's a purchase.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that you took the 10, where did you take that $10,000 out for the volunteer training? Where did, where did you pull that money from?
That money came from our, uh, year. So, that's basically the main money for working in one. We had, we had, we had, we had.
Okay. But by taking that 10,000 out of the P O C, or the P O Cs for, is that the meet view you're saying?
Correct.
So, do we have enough money in that? Fun now to do full coverage for meet view for the 20, 30 to 31 days? If we, if we remove that 10,000, will we have enough money to cover the P O Cs for meet view for full coverage for the, each month?
Uh, no.
No, so?
Yeah. Right after, uh.
Uh oh.
If that reduction, that lowers our meet view coverage by, uh, let's see here. 600. So, you need, we basically reduce meet view coverage. I don't have a lot of that number yet.
That's okay. I, I just need to know if it's gonna cut service out here where we don't need to do.
Yeah. Right after, uh, I'm, we're, we have some of the budget for, uh.
Yeah, I think he's figured it out.
So, really, would that cover meet view for 150 days out of here?
150 days?
Yep.
Which 150 days are we gonna need out here? And if you know the answer, I want the lottery numbers. I don't like that.
We're, we're, even if we're, we're not enough, we're not enough budget for coverage for meet view for the entire.
Right, okay, so then we really probably should put it back in to add in a few more back days back in. Correct?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
We could use the volunteers for some of that coverage.
Well, I, I don't, I don't agree on taking away the P O C money and cut their days down even more.
If we train some paramedics for out here though, then volunteers would be available out here as volunteers.
But I, I, I'm just saying, we're taking away money for having coverage for people in meet view. And I don't think that.
Taking away coverage to train somebody to be here full time.
Not, we're taking money away from them. Well, to be able to have coverage.
Giving it back to them.
Wait, well, we're giving it to an employee or a P O C to be covered out here.
It costs more than that for an employee than it does for a volunteer.
I'm just saying, I don't agree with this. I think that 10,000 you could put back in with the P O C.
Those are volunteer programs.
Well, no, because that's, we still have other ones budgeted for training and maintenance.
I live here in meet view, and I'm as important as somebody that lives somewhere else. And the people out here in meet view are ready not to support the district unless they get service. And their service is emergency medical. We need to figure out a way to make sure that emergency medical is here. Not 30 miles away. And I'm saying we cut down some professional fees. I.
Cut that attorney fee down.
I think life here in meet view is important as anywhere else in this state. And we're charged for doing it. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, that one's not resolved yet, but we'll have to discuss it some more. Um, my next question is on the personal wages. You said we have 290,000 from ambulance revenue. When you add that up, it's, that we have more wages than the 290. Is that funding coming out of the tax revenues?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, and I just wanted to clarify that the cardiac monitors that we voted on for the extra money in the budget, was that actually put towards the, um, from the billing company? Was that put towards the monitors?
Yeah, so we roll, we're looking at, we're looking at, that's what we're doing.
Uh huh.
4,000, 40,000 here, dollar. That's the, uh, that's the, uh, starting three.
Okay, that's what I thought. On the 31,281, which is the total revenue over/under expenditures.
Yeah.
I believe that needs to be moved also up into the capital revenues.
Correct.
But you have zero there right now.
Yeah.
So. Oh, okay, so you're gonna, you'll be moving, okay. I just wanted to make sure, make sure. And my final one is, since we're starting up this, the wildland program, we're gonna have to add a line item in for that. I'm not sure where the money's coming from, but we do need to have something in there or we won't be able to start any kind of wildland services.
What services are you referring to that you need a line item and that's not already?
Well, from what I'm understanding, to get the wildland services program started, it's gonna cost us an amount of money. I don't know what it is.
That's the personnel cost.
Is that personnel, vehicle maintenance?
No, the fees what we pay are the maintenance on the vehicle that's going out on assignment. So, it's, it's not like where you're paying to start up the program. It's when the vehicle goes out, we're paying the employee and the maintenance on the vehicle and stuff.
Do we, do we have to have something in the budget though to get it started? Or is it?
No, it's just, we'll be paying the personnel and maintenance on the vehicle like we're paying now.
Okay, so then do we not need a line item on the budget to deal with the wildland stuff? Where's that money gonna go to that we collect?
The money that comes in.
That's what I'm saying, where's that money gonna go into? So, wouldn't that have to be in the budget?
You should have a space, space to go with it.
That's what I'm saying.
Capital fund, put it in the capital fund.
Because if you don't let the regular budget.
You don't, you don't, you don't want me, you're, you want it separate so that you're not based on, you know, hiring personnel or anything off that money. Because then if you don't.
Okay, so then we, we can, don't have to have a line item in the budget for that? To be able to use it. Okay. Okay. That was my last question. Did you hear a yes? Um, I still believe that that 10,000 for the volunteer training needs to be moved back into the P O Cs wages.
Um, is that interchangeable, Gabe?
Gabe, Charlotte, I wanted to know if that's interchangeable?
Um, I mean, yeah, against the board, it kind of doesn't pay the money for what they wanted to pay them to. Uh, you know, like historically, we have the need to follow it. There are issue of, of the cost, uh, fulfilling, uh, that meet view. There's also an issue of even finding people to come and work to cover for, for meet view. So, uh, you know, typically, we don't hit that budget about. Uh, and, but, and yet, it's, it's the board's priority, I'm bringing that up.
So, it's interchangeable, we find a boatload of people, the chief finds a boatload of people that, that'll cover Dolan and that'll cover meet view, then obviously that's the priority and within the budget. But if that doesn't happen, we have money in the budget for a volunteer program. So, that's what I mean by interchangeable, and that's what he's saying we can do.
In fact, I don't see that there's an actual separate line item here for the volunteer program anyway. He is included in the, the P O Cs elders, still. And they're seeking some training.
I'm sorry, I thought we did our training.
Oh, it's not the regular budget.
Yeah, I thought I seen it here somewhere. Yeah, volunteer training. It doesn't have a line, it doesn't have a lot of budget number yet, but it's gotta be created. And he hasn't been a thousand dollars, not 10,000.
Who has 10?
No.
Oh, sorry, you're online. That's all right, I was wrong spot. It's the, it's, it's on page, the second page. On the bottom, under meetings and trainings.
Yeah, volunteer. Okay. You know, the.
Yep. Move it. If we get the personnel, we can move it.
Okay, I agree, we can move it then, we need to. Okay, I have no questions.
No, I haven't.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the budget.
Larry, did you agree?
Well, yeah. He's made it before he's posted. Okay, Larry made a motion to approve the budget.
Didn't we put the last meeting?
Well, this is the finalized one. I suppose the count, uh, of order supervisors. So, Larry made a.
I'll send that motion.
Call the board.
Joe, yes. Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes. Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes. The budget's approved. Okay, Gabe, I think we're finished with you now. We'll just, we'll sign the certificate after the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Gabe. Thank you, bye.
Bye, guys.
Remember, count the seven, Larry, they do some of the balances.
Now, I've got a call to the public. Is anybody, oh, go ahead.
Um, Pat, how I saw, uh, Box 94 in meet view. Um, I just want to say that I really appreciate the fact that we have had these on YouTube now. I don't know if anyone is counting, but there have been 14 meetings this year where you've been to meet you. That's a long run for some of us that are out here with sticks. But I also wanted to say that when you type up minutes, we all know that every single word doesn't necessarily mean it, especially if the meeting goes on for hours and hours and hours. So, I have been watching these and listening to them. And on the June 13 special agenda, where there was discussion of payout or not for chief's final, um, his final path, I believe I heard a statement that he was in violation of the A R S. And I don't know if I heard it wrong, or if it should not have been said, or if he is actually violating the law. And I think that if that is the case, if the board believes that he's violating the law and if it was supposed to have been made public, the public ought to be informed of that fact.
They did say which area is wrong. Oh, we can't ask, sorry.
You thought that was gonna be on the agenda.
I know what you're talking about. I can't discuss it. But the A G's office says.
So, then it's something that should not have come out in the vote meeting.
Let's put it like this, it was not the wisest move a person could make. And that's the polite way to say, you're right. But no, it shouldn't have happened.
Was that your last question? Anybody else? Oh, we're good. Okay, considerations for future due items? When we get them, I just want to add on that to that part. What's gonna be happening with the agenda items? Because we don't want to create an open meeting quorum. I know you guys have been sending your stuff directly to Karen, so she's just gonna start forwarding it to me. So, I'm aware that you guys are putting on the agenda. Because I'm not gonna be aware until after Karen gets them all. And then we have to start getting the agenda together. So, Karen now, just before it moves on to me. So, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be sent one in. Um, next board meeting will be July 22 in Dolan Springs at 1:30 hopefully, at the Chamber of Commerce.
I would like to ask a question, as you brought it up. I think meetings should be rotated between the two places.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's policy or not, but I think they should be.
Well, the normal meetings are rotated, it's the special ones that are causing the issues. I try to get those, like, we did some of them out here also, and we'll do them. So, um.
I would like to raise a question on the location of the Dolan Springs meeting. I see the chief speaking.
Um, I was, I was talking, uh, to Kipper about this also. I know the chamber is.
I know the chamber is not air-conditioned. It's been very warm, and it's been complaining about by public. Um, I, I talked to her, and I gave her the home Friday night and to the community center. And I think it would be a great place to have our board meetings also. I mean, it's air-conditioned, and it's, it's cool. And especially for people sitting in the public that long, it's, the, the chamber would just, it's been hot. People just can't stand it.
Okay, so then that'll be a future, a next agenda item, because we'll have to do a vote on to the meeting to a different location. Plus, we need to find out localities, do we need to sign a contract or any of that kind of stuff? We'll have that on the next one agenda. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting unless somebody got questions. Joan, first.
I'll second.
Call the board.
Yes. Larry, yes.
Ellen, yes. Charlotte, yes. Debbie, yes. Meeting is adjourned at 3:00 AM.